Good afternoon, everyone. Sorry that we're starting late today. We had some unfinished business that we had to handle today and then we had a little service call that we need to talk about, but we are here and ready to go. And with that, Madam Clerk, could you read the roll?
Yes, sir. Mr. Brown, Ms. Herbert, Dr. Bustles.
Here. Here.
Thank you. Mr. Brennan, Mr. McDowell, Mr. Duval.
Mayor Recaman.
Here. And for the public to know, Dr. Bustles and Ms. Herbert are on the line. They're voting in today for various reasons, but they are here with us. With that, would everybody stand for the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Ed, you want to say a word of invocation before we start, please?
In the midst of all that we do in the city of ours, the greatness of the city sort of hinges itself on the notion that we didn't do it individually by ourselves. The greatness of this city sort of singles out that clear parameter that if it was not me, it's us. So just for a few moments, as we embrace all of the things that are happening in our city, I want you to bow for just a moment in silence. And bowing in silence, remembering the families that have experienced loss. The fourteen-year-old young man who was killed, his family certainly solicit in your prayers and your support. Mrs. Elise Martin, one hundred and eight years old, a powerful businesswoman here in the city died. Mrs. Hattie Donalds and all of the other families that are experiencing loss. We are silent now that we remember them in this great city of ours. Amen.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor Protem. At this point, we would ask for any public input related to items on the agenda as outlined.
Oh, hey, how are you, Ms. Wylie?
I don't want to do the public thing because I have other things I need to do. Because last time I got a tail back for a long time. But I just want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Teresa, City Council. I didn't get finished what I had to say last time. Thank you for helping us. I want to, I'm not only fuss, but I give you honor for what you do, you know? I thank you for helping my neighborhood. I even got one of my neighbors, he would never come out here. Mr. Freeman Snider, because he was, he was hurt.
She drug you.
No, she, uh... He, he was discouraged. It's a lot of them, they discouraged, but not, no, no more, no more at all. And when you have a city councilman that you can call every day, sometimes he don't answer. But you do call me back. Every day, yeah. And he helps us. That's who you need for your communities. And I wish every community would come out like I do. I'm devoted. I see my house going back up and that's, thank you, Lord.
Yes.
Then I see my house going back up, seven and a half years. I want to, I'm gonna tell the world. And I thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. McDowell. You're my rock on the other side of my husband. You know, I'm serious, y'all. I'm, I'm, I'm serious. My husband has went, I, I, I fight for him because he can't speak for himself. But I want to thank you because the other day when I took him there Saturday, I mean Friday, he just cried in the car. He really did. And I thank you. I thank the whole city council. When I can get seven votes, you got my vote. You really do. And my fussing. And I don't fuss because I fuss, I fuss because I think you don't hear me. And I'm gonna be here. I don't care what neighborhood it is. I have to stand by myself because the man upstairs helping me. But anything y'all want me to do, pass out papers, anything, I'm here.
You just keep doing what you're doing.
Yes, yes. Give me something to do. I do it faithfully.
Making sure that we're involved. I, I love when I get a phone call from you because most of the time it's about something in the neighborhood and care about where you live. And that is worth gold.
Yeah, and another thing, Ms. Wylie. I want to thank, uh, thank you too. I need my fire people to have a decent place. I went out there and had breakfast. I was just appalled without fire. Department right there by, by the house is in bad shape, very bad shape. The building is really bad.
You can collect a check from Chief Jenkins on the way out.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Wylie.
And Mayor, we have Tracy here, signed up to speak on item thirteen.
Good afternoon, good afternoon, good afternoon.
How we doing, Ms. Tracy?
Doing good. So good to see everybody.
We haven't talked in so long, I feel like I hadn't seen you forever. How you doing?
We actually spoke this morning. Thank you for responding to my call and Dr. Bustles and Councilwoman, Councilwoman Herbert. So I have spoken to the people I need to speak to. Uh, David Hatcher has also responded to my email. However, I still need to make the concern that with item number thirteen, I was so shocked and dismayed that we were not the Greveview Community on that list for blight demolitions. And we have properties that over fifteen years of bliteness. And, um, I just, I was just alarmed to sadness at one o'clock this morning when I went and saw...
I emailed you right after that.
I did, I did. So, yes, I have spoken to the people I need to speak to. We are still not happy at the process. We know it is a process. We know it's not a fifteen-year process or more than a nine-year process, but there is a process.
I'm gonna tell you, like I told you on the phone right in front of God in this camera, we got you covered.
Thank you.
And we can get there legally. Got there. You don't worry about the money. We got it covered.
Okay, well, I'm...
I say that on behalf of the seven people.
Yes, and also Mr. Hatcher confirmed he was going to use his own money to, uh, to take care of that demo. No, I'm teasing. He didn't say that. But he did, he knows the property. I won't state it. He knows our concerns, our concerns. And I thank you for listening. I just have to represent our community to say we were so unhappy that we weren't on that list. But we know it's to come and we understand the process. Thank you.
You're on a whole bunch of other lists for other things. So remember the bright side, not just the bad. And while you're here, go ahead and do a little PSA for your event on Saturday.
Why do that?
Go ahead, while you're here.
Yes, I would love, oh, thank you. I would love for everyone to come out to our event at the North Minister Presbyterian Church from ten to three. We are doing the first annual pre-Father's Day barbecue giveaway prostate cancer awareness event. And so it's near and dear to my heart, that cause. And I just think we need to have a regular, normal conversation all the time about what's your PSA? It is killing African-American men and it is the only treatable and curable cancer. So, ten to three. Greveview Community, thank you so much.
Right, Mayor, the last individual signed up to speak is Holland Huff Stettler to speak on item twenty-one.
Hi, I just wanted to speak before we got started about the project we're doing at South Pickens, three three five South Pickens. I'm representing Lucas Properties, the new owner. Uh, I just wanted to let y'all know that we have been able to meet with the Neighborhood Association. And they are no longer opposed to our plans and got all their questions answered. So if there is any other questions, I just want to make sure that we are able to get a vote on this tonight if possible. So thank you for hearing me out.
Madam City Manager, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone else?
No, sir, not at this time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, council is asked to approve the April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three and May second, twenty twenty-three council meeting minutes.
There are motion, second, second. No motion, a second, any discussions, concerns, corrections? Hearing done, see, now Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Mr. Brown, Ms. Herbert.
Aye.
Mr. Brennan.
Yes.
Mr. McDowell. Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mayor Recaman.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor and council, we have reached that point in the year, one of the most important parts of the year where we approve our budget for the next fiscal year on time and balanced. And so with that, we will begin the discussion with a budget public hearing and also a presentation for our citizens to understand what the proposed budget includes. And then we'll take each of the related ordinances associated with the proposed FY twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, one by one. I would ask Ms. Missy Kaufman, our Budget Program Management and Grants Director, to come forward to take us through the presentation. Of course, CFO, Assistant City Manager Jeff Palin and I are here also to assist. Hey, Missy.
You have three minutes, Missy.
I would gladly take just a three minutes, maybe, maybe a smidge more. So, um, thank you, Ms. Wilson, Mayor and City Council, of course, our, our wonderful city staff. And the members of the public were glad, as Ms. Wilson said. Honored to be able to present to you the City Manager's Proposed Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-three, two thousand twenty-four Proposed Budget. Slip through the slides. So we are going to try to summarize a, a four hundred and twenty-five million dollar budget in a few short slides. Of course, we're hitting a high level and highlights from each, each of our different funds. The city's budget, just like every other government entity, organizes by, by fund as required. Fund is an accounting entry with self-balancing accounts that are segregated for the purposes of identifying activities and attaining certain objectives according to specific regulations, restrictions and limitations. So the city, of course, has a general fund, our enterprise funds or proprietary, which include our water and sewer, stormwater and parking fund, special revenues of hospitality, accommodations, liquor rebate permit, liquor, liquor permit rebates, as well as the tourism development fee. Those are two new ones that we've included in the budget this year. And our capital improvement programs for water, wastewater, stormwater, parking and various general capital improvement projects that are funded with special revenue this year. As mentioned, the proposed budget is a total of four hundred and twenty-five million across all funds for the operating budget. General fund makes up forty percent of that budget and water and sewer is now at forty-seven percent. Water and sewer now exceeds the general fund in terms of total budget. And the remaining balance, of course, are the other funds as mentioned. Also wanted to demonstrate and show to City Council and to our public, if I can get through the power, the pointer to work. Not sure what's happening. Someone can advance the slides for me? Well, I'll keep proceeding on until we're able to advance the, um, the next slide that will come up is a, um, have the magic touch. The next slide that's coming up will be the proposed budget by our different categories for the total budget. This is demonstrating how our budget is laid out across the different major categories. Okay, all right, good, thank you. The total personnel budget across all of our funds is a hundred and sixty-one million. That's about thirty-eight percent of our total budget. Government services is a service, government services is a service industry. So of course, that's going to rely on our city employees. They are the core of our city services. Rounding out another component of that, if I consolidated all of our debt service, our transfers, capital improvements and our capital outlays or capital purchases, that's the other twenty-eight percent. And I collapse this altogether because those are all related to investments into our, into our city infrastructure. Our total capital improvement program for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four is a hundred and eleven million, with that being water, drinking water, CIP, is at twenty-eight point five, wastewater is sixty-four point five, stormwater is thirteen point one, parking is one point nine, and general CIP funded with special revenues is coming in at three point eight. We will cover these, of course, a little bit more detail as we go through the budget. The framework for this budget, of course, is meeting, is, the focus is meeting the objectives of City Council outcome, objective, um, yeah, City Council's strategic outcome priorities. And the City Manager also establishes various framework in terms of, as we're preparing the budget. City Council establishes budget priorities in the form of policy decisions, budget guidelines and recommendations by way of, of working with the City Manager and the City Staff. This presents as a management and planning tool for us in terms of preparing a proposed budget for you today. This proposed budget meets these objectives in terms of the priorities for this coming fiscal year. In addition, we have identified, and it's not really easy to read, but we, we will have materials that is a little more legible for folks to be able to share in terms of highlighting certain functions and certain activities that is included in this budget that, that are aimed at meeting City Council's strategic outcome in their highlights. We also like to wrap up our budget in terms of, uh, the city by the numbers, as we like to call this information. This just sort of rounds out what four hundred and twenty-five million dollars functions and operates with regards to our, our residents, our number of services, the number of different assets that the city has. Moving forward through each of our different funds, the general fund budget is a hundred and seventy million, hundred and seventy point five. This is an increase of five point seven or three and a half percent over the current year. Of course, the budget was prepared with expectation of meeting, of maintaining our existing services and some cases, some cases increasing those different service levels. And of course, programs aimed at meeting City Council objectives. The general fund is our primary function, our primary fund of, that supports most of our city services, police, fire, public works, our parks recreation, municipal court, internal services, or human resources, IT, city administration. Of cour, and then the strategic approach to balancing this budget was addressed through different revenue enhancements and opportunities in managing our cost. We'll focus a little bit now on the overall general fund revenues, which is again is a hundred and seventy million. Revenues of that hundred and seventy are a hundred and forty-six point seven million. Just a slight increase of three point four. Property taxes, licenses and permits make up sixty-three percent of the total revenue streams of the city. The property tax mill, there is no change in our property tax mills. And property tax millage is at ninety-three point eight percent, which is about eighteen percent of a total residential homeowner's property tax bill in the city of Columbia for Richland School District one. Seventeen point two, thank you. Transfers then total at twenty-three point eight million. That reflects use of three million in fund balance, as well as nine million that we, uh, has, it comes in as a revenue in in terms of our capital lease program. And we also are utilizing another two million in American Rescue Plan funds. And just sort of wrap up a little bit more about the millage. You can see demonstration how the city's property tax mills reflects on total millage of a property tax. The blue line representing the city of Columbia's portion of the total property tax bill coming in at seventeen point two percent as the mirrors, as identified. Property taxes make up about thirty-seven percent of the total general fund revenue. And just for another little graphic, just demonstrating in terms of where city dollars come from in terms of overall revenue streams. Moving on to general fund expenditures, public safety make up the majority of the combined general fund budget coming in at forty-eight percent. Rounding that out again would be general governmental and then public works. The total operating budget for our departments is a hundred and fifty-two million, which is an increase of about two point seven percent. That just reflects the operating budgets. A few other highlights to point out in terms of the total general fund. Sections, we have, I think I skipped a slide, yeah. Major drivers in developing the general fund, of course, will be personnel, fuel, fleet repairs and gone, along with inflation impacts on just our operating costs. The budget does reflect, does reflect the inclusion of the public safety retention and recruitment efforts for both our sworn officers, as well as a marketing and promotion for attracting and recruiting our sworn, sworn police and fire personnel. And then also focused on some alternative service delivery techniques and mechanisms in order to help address calls for service. We're also utilizing, of course, more technology as we improve service delivery across the city. This does impact our budget by way of the costs for just, um, um, reoccurring costs that, that is now in place for cloud-based solutions. That does have an impact, of course, in terms of that trade-off that we receive in terms of the services that we do gain from efficiencies from use of technology. Expanding focus on beautification to improve maintenance of our entrance ways and main thoroughfares. Of course, it's been a big priority for City Council in addressing our medians and making sure our city represents the capital. Programming services in our parks, especially towards our seniors, is a highlight and focus of our Parks Recreation Department. Other priorities or focuses in the general fund is a, is a, again, as mentioned, the total general fund budget represents a hundred and forty-six million. The, the other components of the budget outside of our operating departments, we do have a, an allocation for services that are provided to various Richland County functions to include the Alvin and Esquelen Detention Center, that's for the prisoner per diem, as well as the Fifth Circuit Solicitor and, of course, the Public Defender. Our debt and capital lease total, our debt, our capital, our budget for capital debt service is three point six million. It's a slight reduction from the current year in terms of debt service schedule. And then our payment for our capital lease is six point one. And that does include the issuance of an additional lease for this coming fiscal year. Leases, it's a capital lease, but it's a financing function. It's not a traditional lease. It's often thought of in terms of, um, capital lease for vehicles and so forth. Expenditures, again, just another demonstration of where our dollars go or where your dollars go with regards to, on the general fund budget. The majority of that, again, is public safety. Moving on with our, our enterprise funds, starting with water and sewer. The total water and sewer fund budget is a hundred and ninety-nine, almost two hundred million dollars, with a capital improvement program of ninety-three million. The total projected budget revenues is a hundred and ninety-nine, it's an increase of sixteen point nine, almost seventeen million, or nine percent over the current year. It does reflect the inclusion of a five percent proposed rate adjustments for water and sewer rates. The, that five percent increase is projected to generate about one, eight point eight million in revenues. And those revenues are, of course, dedicated to the capital improvement program and other operating costs. The revenues, um, the other factors also attributed to the revenue growth is related to customer growth and, of course, projected consumptions. Just for demonstration, in terms of what that impact looks like on a, on a in-city water bill, current water portion of a bill is twenty-three point eight three. That's based on the assumption of five hundred and nine, five thousand nine hundred and eighty-four gallons, which is a traditional, which is a typical residential bill for inside city or usage. And then, of course, the proposed would be twenty-five dollars and two cents. And then, of course, the wastewater portion on that same amount of consumption, inside city limits would be forty-three dollars and ninety-seven cents per month and would increase to forty-six dollars and seventeen cents per month. Combining those two costs together, a monthly, a monthly existing bill would be of sixty-seven dollars and eighty cents would increase to seventy-one dollars and nineteen cents per month. So looking at about three dollars and thirty-nine, thirty-nine cents per month on a typical use, average use of eight hundred cubic feet or five thousand nine hundred and sixty-four gallons of water. The total operating budget, of course, is also a hundred and ninety-nine million, since we do have a balanced budget. The, um, increase for departments is a hundred, is, is the, the total budget for operating departments is a hundred and twenty million. That's a net increase of fourteen point three or fourteen percent over the current year. Of course, those increases are attributed to operating costs associated with electricity at our, at our utility plants, our two water treatment plants and our wastewater plant, of course, chemical costs, as well as other non-capital related maintenance and ongoing services utilizing our contractors and, of course, capital equipment purchases. The largest portion of the operating department's budgets represents utilities. That would be most of, that would be the entire, our, our two water treatment plants, our wastewater plant, our, um, our maintenance crews and service crews and construction crews. Moving on with the remaining of the water and sewer fund, the debt service is forty-nine point five million. Of course, that debt service is based on the existing debt service schedule for the purposes of financing our capital improvement program. It does have an incre, a slight increase of one point one million, it's less than one percent over the current year. Transfers out is twenty-six point six million. It's an increase of three point five or fifteen percent over the current year. The majority of that increase is, is associated with the cash that is used to fund the capital improvement program that trans, that increased from sixteen to nineteen million. The other portion of that allocation is a indirect, or the cost allocation for general fund of four point seven billion. Just as a snapshot is the proposed drinking water capital improvement program, which is twenty-eight point five million, the majority of which that water, that, um, budget is related to projects for water quality. And then just visually, you can see, of course, our water and sewer system exceeds city limits. So we have a number of projects that are, are, this is just a highlight of some of those projects included in the proposed fiscal year. More information, of course, is available on our website with a little more detail with regards to, might be something a little more visual that you can see than what's on the slides. Waste water, proposed wastewater, um, capital improvement program is sixty-eight point five million, with the majority of that project being related to capacity building. And of course, and also rehab in the wastewater programs. And again, just visualizing where those projects are throughout the entire water and sewer system. Moving on to our stormwater proposed budget, the stormwater proposed budget, operating budget is eighteen point two million, with a capital improvement program of thirteen point one million. This is a slight increase of two point one or thirteen percent over the current year. It does not include a rate increase for this coming year. The majority of this increase is primarily attributed to the budget reflecting more accurately what, what collections for are looking like in terms of our, our stormwater system. Last year they were, or the current year, they were probably a little underestimated in terms of where we were actually collecting. So this is really based on the growth, the, the increase here is really based on the fact of where we are in terms of actual collections. Of course, the, um, source of revenues for the stormwater fund are the stormwater fees. Expenditure-wise in the stormwater budget, the total, um, the operating budgets are eight point two million. The largest portion of the stormwater budget is a, is a transfer to the, of cash to the stormwater improvement program. Debt services budget, two point four million. And then the operating departments, like I mentioned, is eight point two of that total budget with the departments budgets that reflect public works, engineering and debt service. Stormwater CIP is eleven point, uh, excuse me, thirteen point one million, with the majority of that work being based on flood reduction efforts and stream rehabilitation. Yes?
You say no rate increase on stormwater?
Correct.
Then we have an ordinance, number, item number nine, that has a, a rate increase.
That would be suspending the rate increase. Initially, there was a five-year rate increase proposed in two thousand sixteen, two thousand seventeen. City Council, we have suspended the fifth and final year. And so council has to take an actual action to suspend that rate.
So that's suspending it rather than adding it on.
Right. So the fifth, the fifth, the fifth year of that five-year program has been suspended. So the fifth, the fifth year of that five-year program has been suspended until a determination that those rate adjustments are necessary.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Moving on to the parking fund budget, the total parking fund budget is 11.4, operating budget, and 1.9 in capital improvement program. Parking fund budget revenues make up 10.2 million. Transfers in is 1.2, and most of that transfer in is from use of fund balance of $1 million that will be applied towards the CIP, our capital improvement program. Revenues are a little more aggressive projected than what we have been, of course, as we're seeing more folks come back and utilize our parking system and visit downtown and visit our city. So our parking garages and parking activities are obviously much more active than in most recent years. Interest does count for a portion of the revenue streams, and of course, as mentioned, we're using 1 million in continued funding from our fund balance. Expenditure-wise, the parking fund, departments total 5.5 of that total budget. Our parking fund supports, of course, the operations of the parking system to include our monthly parkers, as well as our parking meters and our parking decks and parking lots. Capital improvement of 1.9 and debt service of 3 million on existing debt from prior capital improvement programs. It does include a transfer to the general fund of 500,000. The budget, the focus of the parking fund budget is continuing to focus on effective and innovative tools, as we've described to City Council in recent presentations, with our improvement operations and customer service in progress. And of course, a parking study system is complete and review and recommendations will be underway. The parking CIP, our capital improvement program of 1.9 million, is focusing on five different parking decks throughout the city, and will serve to help address capital or urgent capital needs of our parking facilities. Moving on to special revenues, this includes our hospitality tax of 14.7 million, accommodations tax of 5 million, tourism development fee of 4 million, and liquor permit rebate of 2.1. The hospitality tax budget is 14.7, this includes revenues of 14.7 million. This is an increase in the revenue collections of 2.8 or 6% over the current year. Of course, that's in line with actual collections. It does reflect the use of fund balance of 1.2. The current budget is actually a $4 million use of fund balance, so it shows a net reduction in overall budget, but in essence, revenue-wise, it is an increase, it's just that there's less use of fund balance. Expenditure-wise, City Council has already made an allocation or directed an allocation of 3.1 million towards the Hospitality Tax Committee. Those recommendations will be coming to you later this month for City Council consideration. The proposed budget includes an allocation of 2.2 million that has not yet been allocated and pending for line name agencies or any other council-directed allocations. Again, those will be coming later in this month. Transfer to the general fund is at 4 million, that's based on the current year. Part of those allocations are helping to support efforts for beautification. Debt service is at 2.5 million, based on our existing debt service schedule. The proposed budget also includes several initiatives as addressed by City Council, a public art initiative in our neighborhoods of 100,000, city marketing and promotion, our telling of our story for 385,000. That's just a portion of that total funding. There's other funding in some of the other funds. Expansion of Clean and Safe to the Elmwood Corridor. Our roadway bollards in our various entertainment and hospitality districts will be a public safety feature added to our roadways. And then capital investments in various parks of 1 million and 59,000. Accommodation tax is at 5 million. That is a fairly aggressive increase over what we actually see in terms of collection. The majority of that is coming from a use of a fund balance based on the prior year fund balance, as well as unallocated funds from the current year. Actual revenues are coming in at, we're projecting at 2.9 million, which is an increase of about 11% of our current year budget and is in line with prior year actuals or current year actual collections. The use of fund balance is 2.1 million. The expenditure-wise, the expenditure is based on the allocations as accorded to state law, as we've mentioned before. Accommodations tax is much more prescriptive in terms of how we utilize our accommodations tax funds. 25,000 to the general fund, 5% for a general purpose, which makes available allocation of 227,000. Funding towards a public restroom or public facilities initiative that's also been addressed by City Council for 230,000. Debt service of 873, this is towards the debt that's been issued for the Finley Park Rehabilitation Project. And then accommodations tax, available allocation of 3.7 million. This has not been allocated, it's again, for future allocations based on City Council's direction or discussions later this month. Those are the remaining funds as accordance to state law, 65% towards tourism-related expenses, and of course, 35% towards marketing and promotions. State law, again, is also very prescriptive about the use of a committee structure in terms of how those funds and who those funds are allocated to. So you will have your committee recommendations available for you for City Council consideration as well. Wrapping up and moving on into our tourism development fee, this is also a new budget and a new fund added to our programmed budget. It is a total budget of 4 million with three, it's based on 3% fee imposed on hotels, motels, and other accommodations. This is referred to as the local accommodations tax. It is, the allocations recommended or proposed for this budget includes a $1 million towards the debt service of the Finley Park revitalization and construction project, also utilizing funds for the city marketing initiative. And then what's not reflected on here is 2.7 million, 2,750,000 that is recommended for the Experience Columbia, ongoing funding that usually was funded from the source as well. Finally, the liquor permit rebate, this also reflects a budget amount of 2.1 million. Again, the majority of that is from fund balance of 1.8 million. The actual revenues that are generated by this fund are around 350,000. The 1.8 million in fund balance is dedicated towards a capital improvement program or project at Owens Field. And then, of course, typically, the use of these funds have been funded to help support capital repairs, such as the city's facilities with the historic Columbia Foundation and other historic structures as prescribed by state law. There are no allocations at this point, that's also reserved for City Council future use, other than the 1.8. Wrapping up the special revenue, we have included, these would actually be general capital projects, but they're funded with special revenues, so we're calling them out here. This includes 1.8 million, as mentioned, for Owens Field, Hampton Park Playground Equipment of 150,000, Greenview Park and Columbia Tennis Center, it's, this is for $634,000. This is for park and tennis, it's not just for tennis facilities. Also, Melrose Park, 275,000, and then, of course, bollards at 1 million. The revenue streams are funded for these specific projects because most of the special revenues, tourism and parks and recreation are much more prescribed in terms of the use of these funds than there are other general purposes, so of course, parks and our recreation functions make for good use of these resources. And that wraps up 425, actually, 436 million in a little more than three minutes, Mayor. Yeah. We do have discussions also on our proposed ordinance changes, since we are also bringing forward to you today not only the Budget Public Hearing Ordinance, but also the Water and Sewer Ordinance, as mentioned, with the 5% rate adjustments. And as Councilman Dufal has mentioned, the ordinance that suspends the fifth year of the Stormwater Ordinance. But also, we've brought forward a couple of other functions, a couple of other events that are being proposed. Parks Recreation has proposed a few adjustments to their various fees. We have introduced, and City Council has endorsed, the inclusion of special event fees. And the fire hydrant fees, that was also mentioned previously, the budget does include fire hydrant fees at a rate of 10% adjustment. And then also an adjustment to police false alarm funds. We'll go through these real briefly. Parks Recreation, as mentioned, they've made a few adjustments to there because of the use and the active, the active nature of those parks, they've asked for a proposed fee to reserve those. Our other park picnic structures, of course, are first come, first served at no rate or no fee. And then there are some moderate updates towards our support staff hourly rates. And then finally, wrapping up with summer camp, these would be rates that would be in effect for summer camp of 2024, not for the current year. So there's a few adjustments for those camps rates, those are in line with other, what we see in other camps in our community. Moving on with special events, we won't belabor, we've had this conversation with City Council in terms of just covering different charges for special events, of course, why are we proposing this? These are, the fact that most of the city services that are provided at various special events are at no different, at no cost to the event promoter. Of course, these are services that are provided by the city for special events. They are often, these fees and rates are helping to offset the cost of those services. And of course, the purpose for doing this is to be able to charge fees, mechanism for financing government-provided goods and services. Just a little snapshot about the city's special events, looking at, in terms of, most of our special events come by way of requests from the police department, through the police department. In 2022, there were 321 special events that accounted towards 15,000 man-hours from the police department. That does not count the other additional support hours provided by the different departments that help support these events. And there were 389 events that requested one-time alcohol beverage permits. Just year-to-date in 2023, and this is actually about a month old in terms of data, there have already been 77 events accounting for 3,300 man-hours, and 126 special events requiring one-time alcohol and beverage permits. That's just to demonstrate part of the effort and workload that these events do have on our services. Types of events that we're referring to could be anything from block parties and concerts, races and parades. Now, all of these events, of course, will be charged, this is just demonstrating what type of events there are being provided. City Council has also expressed that neighborhoods would not be charged for use of certain services. Again, as certain services that are being provided, we, this would be, of course, we do have some sort, some events or some services that are charged, like rental love of park facility, police services, parade permits, and then, of course, fire prevention and the fire marshal. Types of services that are not charged currently include the pickup and delivery of barricades, the pickup and delivery of roll carts at special events, street sweeping, traffic control management and services that are used, other city equipment and staff time. Again, the schedule that's on the screen is not intended to be legible from here, but of course, it is available on the city's website and will make available as well for the public. And we'll promote these, these rates would go into effect January 1 of 2024. So there's different rates for city services, and there's also rates for different permits that includes inclusion of a road closure fee that has currently not been in place, as well as different rates for parade permits. Next, we have the fire hydrant fee, the proposed fee adjustment of 10%. This would increase, this would increase a residential senior unit that currently is $10 to $1, and the rates, of course, vary 10% across the different structures based on the type of customer receiving the, that the bill is charged. These revenues will generate about 1.5 million in revenues. Finally, the false alarm, police false alarm fee. The fee structure is associated with the calls for service that the police department encounters for, usually for faulty police alarms, these are false fire alarms. So the false, of their total calls for service, 165,000, police alarms calls are roughly 3%. And of those, of their total calls for service, and of those total calls for service, 94% are for false alarms. So you can see that that obviously has a big impact in terms of the number of calls for false alarms that the police department encounters on a regular basis. And with that, we have, again, wrapped up.
First of all, Ms. Wilson and city staff, thank y'all for presenting a budget following with this council, and I want to thank council because we've spent a lot of time working together, and this is year two of committing to investing in Columbia. Our goal is to have a more vibrant community, a safe community, but investing in our services, our employees, providing them the technology, the tools to do their job more effectively and efficiently, but also making sure that we're taking care of them as they take care of our community, but also investing in our parks, our infrastructure. Obviously, beautification and appearance is very important to us, but we are the capital city, and we're going to continue to invest in our capital city so both our employees and our citizens receive the best service and the quality service that they deserve, and that's our number-one goal. And I think we've achieved that with this budget. We continue to find creative ways, we're spending money differently, we're investing across, and we're shortening our debt loads by trying different ways to finance things and look at how we get things done in a much faster way, I guess is the best way to put it, but making sure that we don't skip on quality or efficiencies. And I just want to thank y'all for what you've presented.
Thank you, Mayor.
You followed our goals as a city, and I think we're achieving it, we're going to continue to invest, we're going to continue to go after every grant, every ability to go after every funding opportunity, both at the state, federal levels, and outside of those, the private sector, there's a lot of money that's available through philanthropy, through arts grants and others. As we made that investment, to have third parties help us go after that, we're going to continue to do that. But with that, I just wanted to thank you all for what you, what you brought us, and I think this is exactly what we asked for. And there's a little tug-in and pull-in here and there, but I think all our departments deserve the credit for bringing forth a budget that truly is a reflection of Columbia, South Carolina.
Yes, sir. Mayor, we want to say thank you. I won't say thank you too early, we got to get our votes in, but we really appreciate the collaboration and, you know, genuine hard work that the staff put in from my standpoint, but also a council who is willing to listen and give good, clear direction to us. So we are very appreciative of the, of the hard work. I'm glad we're almost to the end. Thank you, sir.
Good job. It has been a task over the last six months, and it possibly could have been longer. Meeting every, seemingly every day, it's been a real, true and pure exercise in putting together a budget that is reflective of this city. And we are thankful for you, Ms. Wilson, staff, Missy, Jeff, thank you for making sure that the purse strings are tightened. Thank you. Oh, yes. Thank you all so much.
Missy, thank you. So we'll go through these ordinances that are tied to our budget, the first being ordinance number 2023-063, to raise revenue and adopt the budget for the City of Columbia, South Carolina for the fiscal year ending June 30, 2024.
We got a motion?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any further discussion?
And then, I'm sorry, Mayor, it is a public hearing, so at this point, it was open. I feel with the presentation, but we should probably ask for any public comment.
Would anyone like to speak on the subject of the budget? This is the first reading, so if you want to go read the 400 pages online and come back to us, and we can get into some detail before the second reading, but one, I appreciate all the folks that are here, because usually it's about five people here, and so engagement is great. But this, you do- But this you do, if you do have some questions down the road, we will have a second reading so you can ask those questions before.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you.
With that, Madam Clerk, I would read the role, please. With that, Madam Clerk, I would read the roll, please.